I think I'll be okay. Maybe it should, should it be one more up maybe?
Cancel, I guess we have to cancel, but you know, I don't think we necessarily have to write them all off depending on how things go over the next three months.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know what that would look like, but it's sort of, I, you know, I, I, I think we all agree. We'd love to see something happen in the future. It's just, we can't. You know, there's just too many logistical things that go into this and we just, I think we just have to, to set a kind of make a, make a definitive stop here.
I agree for right now, I guess cancel is the right word. I just think we should keep our minds open as things evolve to what we're, what's possible and when it's possible.
Right. The challenge I felt was if you, if we postpone it, then postponing really means assigning it to three more dates further out. And each one of those bands, you know, they, they have six months. Preparation time typically for these concerts and they put a ton of time into that and none of us can practice together. And this year our band is slated for the, for the finale concert and, and we're as motivated as we've ever been. And there's no way we can practice together. So I don't even feel like we could be prepared, even if we said you're going to be in October. You know, so it's a
Interesting, but then the question is, what are those bands going to do in October?
Well, they'll start again for, for, for future endeavors, you know, but, but not to perform in October. We'll get, we'll get back together and, and you know, we're doing our best to all that we, I kind of speak collectively for a lot of the bands that I'm connected with and people are trying to do things remotely. But it's, um, it's very, very difficult to do that effectively. Um, and I think it would be kind of interesting to put us all in front of big audience with expectations of a certain quality that. I don't want to, I don't want to have any of us mess up on it. So, um. These are tough to, and the other thing is there are so many bands involved and members who are involved that could. Be exposed between now and then. And if there's a bloom, I mean, there's just so many things that point to. It probably wouldn't be able to go out and I'm about the most optimistic person that I know, and I still can't figure out a way to safely say this makes a lot of sense.
Well, I agree. Right now, I don't think we can say that. I'm just saying there may be in July and October may look a lot better. It's my only point.
Yeah.
New date now.
Well, I mean, if, if, if it starts to look quite different and we're getting more green lights, you know, then. Then maybe we don't have three concerts, maybe we'll have one and, and you know, we'll choose the, I can help choose, you know, the best. Man for the event at that point. I just think it's highly unlikely, you know, I, I just don't see any of us wanting to do a mass gatherings that quickly. Particularly with the idea that there could be a bloom again in the fall.
Yeah, we, we don't know what this is going to look like, but, but David, your, your point is well taken, uh, that we want to get people back to normal and have something to look forward to and, and. Just have to keep revaluing as we go forward. Thank you. Are there other public comments on this? Anyone from the council want to, uh, want to just comment on this before we?
No.
Okay. I think we're all
Jeff, I, Jeff, my hand is up every, everywhere. 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 No, and just really to thank you Paige, because I know how hard this decision is. And I was part of that discussion last week in the, you know, the committee chair's meeting and thank you for all the hard work. And I know everybody's similarly motivated it, which is to get back, get your music back as soon as we can. So.
Yeah, thank you. Um, thank you very much. I appreciate that. And we'll, yeah, we'll make every effort to get some creative solution. We're given a green light.
Yep. Craig or Mary Ann, do you want to, any of the comments on?
Um, sure. I mean, but my only comment is really, I, I think it's regrettable, but we have to do it. So.
Should that, um, announcement, by the way, be managed by Jeremy, you and, and. Brandie or Carrie and?
Yes. Uh, thank you, Paige. Uh, through the chair will, um, include it both as a, as a wide release. News item and put it out to the majority, to the maximum number of people tomorrow. We'll also include it in the mayor's message. Um, because we think a lot of people are reading that right now.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, now we'll spread it far and wide.
Okay.
Are we taking, do we need an action on this or are we just?
No, there's no action related to this item.
Yeah. But we, we do concur that this is, we, we need to cancel this. So we're
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Actually there, uh, through the chair to Cara. As this is a recommendation to the council, I believe that they would. Accept the recommendation. Excuse me. Sorry about that.
Yeah, I was just looking at that. That's, that sounds like a, a better approach.
Okay. In that case, I will need a motion. Craig has his hand up.
Move, accepting our recommendation.
Second.
Okay. Move by Craig, seconded by John. Sharon, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Winger.
Hi.
Councilmember Richards.
Hi.
Councilmember Hughes.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Derwin.
Hi.
Mayor Alfs.
Hi. Okay. Uh, motion passes. Thank you, Paige.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right.
I will take a mute here.
Yeah, yeah. Take care.
All right. Thanks so much.
Okay. That moves us on to, uh, sorry, that will jump back then to item three, which is an update on COVID-19 and our response. Jeremy.
Thank you, Mayor Alfs, members of the council. Um, so I'd like to start again, as I've started with my previous updates with the state. I think most people had an opportunity to either watch or subsequently read Governor Newsom's announcement, this announcements this week related to. A plan moving forward to gradually loosen the social and physical distancing requirements. It appears that his approach is based on the science and does require a significant amount of testing. So. I think there's still many questions to be answered about how that will be implemented. Um, but. This is in conjunction with two other Western states. It sounds like a broadly similar approach to a number of states in the East Coast. So we'll certainly be looking to them. About, uh, what that looks like moving forward. One rumor that we're hearing, um, and it's still just a rumor is what may happen as it relates to construction. As one, uh, would imagine there's a lot of interest, uh, to. Re, um, start construction activities, um, in the state. And, um, certain parts of the state have, uh, done different things at, at different times related to construction. Uh, as you recall, the. Town of Portola Valley was the first city in San Mateo County to prohibit construction activities. Um, the rumor is that. Whatever the state decides on construction, what construction activities are allowed for, what types of projects may have the effect of superseding any other orders that are created by. Cities, which candidly does bring me a level of concern. This again is a rumor. Uh, we don't know what this will look like exactly, but I've heard this from multiple sources that, um, that's under, um, assessment right now. So. I hope that's not the case. Um, I think we've been successful because we've, um, found our own path in this, given our own unique circumstances and our ability to provide service. So. Certainly if I hear anything that becomes more of a rumor, uh, excuse me, less of a rumor and more of something, um, concrete, I will let you know. But I did want to bring that up. I thought it was, I mentioned enough to, to mention here. For the county, um, let me share the county's page. Just give me a second here. So as we've, uh, shown in the past, the county has a dashboard that shows information about cases and deaths in the county. There's been, um, slight uptick in cases, deaths have held steady in the last few days. Again, as a reminder, we do not anticipate city by city information being released by the county.
You may be showing us the wrong screen, Jeremy. We're looking at an email from Bill Chang.
Yeah, this doesn't look like what you were trying to share with us. I'm not sure.
Nope, that is not. Well, probably, and certainly not as interesting. Let me do this again. Is this showing the county's page?
Yeah.
Yes.
There you go. Thank you. Sorry about that technology. Um, so again, this shows a total number of cases, total number of cases and. Deaths. County also has hospital data and the county manager has been. Optimistic and enthusiastic about how we're still under. Maximum number of beds or ICUs required. Um, this is a very useful page and here's testing results. The, uh, county health officer has released a couple of new, uh, statements. Uh, one. Today was actually related to is an order on residential care facilities. And I think it, what it does primarily is further restrict access and the like. His statement of March 13th was also an optimistic message in some ways. Did not open. Um, it looks like the link is incorrect. Um, he, in his message, among other things stated that, um, he believed that social distancing was having an, an effect. So it was good to see that. And I think that the data is bearing that out at this point. So these are resources that I hope, um, all residents take advantage of. They're updated regularly and, and certainly provide us with some great information. Here's the health officer's statement just below. Wanted to again show the SAM SIDA page, San Mateo County Economic Development Association page. Uh, this is a great resource. For small businesses. Uh, they, uh, update this regularly with, uh, information. From the feds in the state on how small businesses can be supported. So I highly recommend this, um, for all those who are either interested. In the issue or small business looking for more information. Um, as you can see, they updated on a, on a pretty regular basis, on a daily basis. Some of it's news, some of it's a little more relevant information. So would recommend that. Give me just a moment as I pull up another screen. In the coming days. I mean, I would defer to, um, Anne on this. We, we are expecting to hear more about the San Mateo County Strong Program, program, SMC Strong Program. And opportunities, uh, for city-specific donations to support businesses, um, in particular communities. The, the program hasn't been launched yet. I think it's going to be launched early next week. I had reached out to SAM SIDA to get more information, but hadn't heard back in time for this meeting today. I don't know if Anne, if you wanted to add anything based on what you've heard about this.
Yeah, I think that the, um, and I know most of us have been participating on those calls and Roseanne Faust, you know, the, the daily, or excuse me, three time a week now calls and Roseanne Faust has been very. She's been terrific at sort of bringing everybody up to date. And certainly as we learned, I think it was Monday that the, um, there had been in fact. An interest on the part of some of the cities in the county to create what they call geo-specific. Targeted fund and donations so that if the town would choose to potentially make a donation into that fund, we could target it obviously for the businesses in our community. And, you know, define how that would be set up. I mean, I'm sure we could. Include Ladera, for instance, if that was something that was part of the desire. So. We're waiting to see, I think, that information on how that would work, but it would obviously allow SAM SIDA to administer that program. If we believed and obviously did enough analysis to support some type of a donation from the town. So. That's something to keep our eye on. And perhaps by next Wednesday, we'll have more information to really talk about it in much more detail. And at the same time, obviously Craig and I are working on the finance side for the town as the two-person subcommittee, working with the team with Jeremy and his team. To determine what our availability of reserves will be, since obviously we're moving through a whole new world. In terms of where we're going to be with, you know, the expenditures we hadn't anticipated, revenues we may not get, you know, just a, a real sort of. Hard look at where we think we are now and our best sort of estimates moving forward, which would be the other side of the equation. Terms of what we might be able to contribute. So that's just the 10,000 foot level discussion as this just surfaced. On Monday. So I think the good news is that it'll give us a little bit of time to convene and look at our own finances and then understand the program as it's rolled out. Since it doesn't exist quite yet, um, to see whether it might be something we'd be interested in pursuing for our small businesses.
Thanks, Anne. The, um, one of the exciting opportunities here too, is that it would provide an opportunity for residents to donate to the fund, then that money can be then used in, in, uh, for local businesses. So. We'll certainly provide more of that information as it comes out. Moving to, uh, town updates, um, I think the most. Exciting news, at least announced from, from my end is that in the last week, we've been able to make a significant transition to non-COVID-19 related activities across multiple departments. So I wanted to highlight some of those. Um, I think the area where we've seen, uh, uh, a lot of this is in the planning and building department and, um. The planning building director and I, Laura Russell, had a great conversation on Monday. Related to what we think we're going to be able to start doing, um, in the coming days and weeks. So those include commission meetings. We are hoping to bring both commissions back online before the end of the month. We have a few items that, um, will lend themselves to a Zoom meeting that, uh, were either canceled or we want to bring forward now. So we can introduce Zoom meetings to both of those bodies and, um, begin some other activities. We are also. As I alluded to last week, looking at, uh, activating some portions of the planning and building department that, uh, their activities that have not been able to, to move forward. So. Small building projects and remodels, starting to accept those. The, uh, the planning department, we are beta testing, um, with, um, projects that we knew were coming in, but hadn't come in by the time we. Shut down the offices, um, electronic submissions. Uh, we have a, a software that we're extremely. Affordable software on the order of hundreds of dollars total for the year. That allows us to look at plans electronically with our current technology. So we're trying that out. We think it'll work great and then we'll be able to, um, start at, uh, start bringing in other projects, um, moving forward. We still are, um, working on our, uh, reactivation plan. So there's, there's obviously aspects related to that that haven't been, um, completely sorted out at this point, but, um. We hope to do some submittals, certainly resubmittals are underway now. The town staff is engaging in, uh, the normal meetings you would have for some of the larger projects, uh, that we've been working on. Um, so Stanford and Neely. So these are. The kind of the normal internal status update meetings with the applicants or the EIR consultants. Both of those projects require some EIR work. So. We're taking, we started to take those meetings as, as, um, as we're available. So I think it's really exciting. Um, and it's something that we're, um, happy to start implementing for residents who, um, I'm sure eager to. Submit plans, resubmit plans and, and do some work. In, uh, public works, we've, um, many of you might have seen our crews out doing, uh, vegetation management work in the right of way. That's going on. Encroachment permits for utilities and other right-of-way work. So that's happening. In our administrative department, um. There's a number of items. Uh, I think the PB connect relaunch was, was, was nice and we're going to continue to roll that out. We're seeing a lot more activity there. Um, and hope to have more data soon. The, uh, updating a number of our annual agreements. Um, and we're also working closely with our staff on cybersecurity issues, which we were doing, um, at the start of the year and, uh, one area that is not. Perhaps the most exciting area, but with everybody working at home, economics is critical. So we're working on that. Um, so. That's all to say that, um, we're, we're able to do a variety of additional tasks now, um, now that we're over this first hump of. The reactive COVID-19 responses. Um, and people have, um, to the extent you can, gotten a little more used to, um, the status quo, as it were. The, um, wanted to move next to the budget. As Anne, uh, referenced, um, the subcommittee made up of Craig and, uh, Anne are going to be receiving materials from staff this Friday. It's our full analysis of the, uh, the current impact and I would say the rest of the fiscal year impact of the COVID crisis on our budget. The, as I described a bit, um, in broad strokes last week. It looks like the impacts on the order of, I would say, $200,000 to $300,000, um, with some reductions related to changes in expenditures. So it'll be a little less than that. The, um. So then we'll be bringing that forward, um, with any recommendations from the subcommittee on the, on, uh, April 29th. The budget process is underway. It's, uh, we're describing it as a provisional budget. Uh, the budget. Needs to be adopted by the council by the end of the fiscal year. This budget will be a, um. A stripped down budget. It won't include a CIP. It won't include council priorities, which we are bringing to the council next Tuesday as an advisory item primarily and is something that we can utilize later when we re, uh, reactivate the. The budget process in July, when we do a, what we typically call a mid-year, particularly early in the year. So that's underway. In some of the, um, conversations I've been having with my staff and with, with others. Indicate the following. Um, we, we think it's reasonable to assume that the level of planning and billing and activity in town won't significantly change, um, at least in the short term. Once we activate, uh, fully the department, um, we're not expecting to see, um, major changes related to the permit activity. So, um, right now my thinking, um, and the thinking of the planning director is that we'll leave a lot of the permit revenue streams, uh, more or less intact, uh, compared to this year. We also aren't anticipating any particular issues with, uh, property taxes. We'll leave those probably fairly flat. The areas that, um, are of certainly some concern to us are, um, you know, sales tax, which will be very different. Some of the state and local taxes, uh, local fees, uh, revenue sources, excuse me, that we receive. For transportation purposes have a relationship to sales tax, either directly or indirectly. So those will potentially look different. But as they're mostly restricted funds, I think that there's opportunities for alternative ways to deal with the, the major impacts, which would be. Some salaries in, uh, public works and, uh, non, uh, annual road right-of-way work. So that will be an area that we'll be focusing on. Um, and then clearly the other, uh, revenue sources we described in the past, uh, leagues and, um. And our, um. Instructors and the like. So that budget, we want to adopt that or bring that to the council for adoption. The end of this fiscal year and then essentially restart our normal budget process in July. With a goal of bringing something back to the council in September, October timeframe that would reflect. with the goal of bringing something back to the council in September, October timeframe that would reflect better data better understanding of where we are and what's possible. We just don't have all that information yet. An example of that is if I was using the normal CIP for February, it's gonna, it will look very different than the one in April, let alone another another month. So those are the kinds of factors we're taking in for that. Reopening, lack of a better term, that's another issue that we will be bringing to the council on the 29th of April. There are a variety of outstanding issues that we're eager to hear from the council on on what the approach will be for. You know, particularly anything that has to do with gatherings and events and the use of our facilities in that regard. So we, I'm talking to my colleagues in other cities to see what issues that they're thinking about, too. In the smaller cities, it seems like we have the same set of issues as really facility use and the safety of our employees. We just want to make sure that any employees that are engaging with the public in a way where they may be exposed, even if there's, we're on the downside of the curve, that they're feeling safe. I certainly would not ask any of my employees to do anything they didn't feel comfortable doing. So that may be included in the recommendation to to you. The COVID issues for us are primarily, I think, monitoring issues, monitoring how our facilities and our roads are being impacted by parking and traffic and and residents. We have seen a few gatherings in recent days that we're going to be looking at further to see if there's any way to ensure those don't occur again. I think bike and pedestrian issues pop up from time to time as we see more runners and and other pedestrians in the shoulder areas. So we just want to be mindful of what that experience looks like. But nothing pressing. We've, we talked about Willowbrook last week. The the traffic on Willowbrook has really died down. Some residents have put out some of their own barriers, but as soon as we get some of the signage that we described, which we're anticipating by the end of this week, we hope that will help. Anne, you may want to speak to the conversation that we had yesterday with the leagues and where they are in their thinking on future sporting opportunities.
Yeah, this is, as you can imagine, one of the most challenging things to think about reopening. And John Myers led a terrific discussion with all the league representatives and in sort of ascending order in terms of timeliness, the first one obviously is Little League, which would would be underway at this point and well underway. And as it was described by the representatives from that league, they had a whole series of events planned here, including sort of the World Series of of Little League. And I think they're going to have to, unfortunately, they know that their, the international group has already canceled all the Little League activities and locally, they're basically now, I think, falling into line. The one sort of exception to that, and Jeremy, correct me if my memory is faulty on this, but I think they were talking about if it was at all possible to have any outdoor event that would be, you know, near the end of the the season, in which it would be sometime late summer for what they called their grand, sort of the World Series of this, of their whole program for the oldest participants, the ones that are going to be going out of Little League next year. So he mentioned a 12-year-old. So if there's any way to preserve some potentially adjusted, a socially adjusted activity, or at that point, that was their one sort of request to sort of not fully cancel and shut everything down, but effectively, everything in Little League is shut down. So the discussion then really moved to the Alpine strikers and soccer and they obviously come in and I will, even before I get to that, the adult leagues, and I know Jeff, you're a participant in the softball league. I think John was pretty much willing to say that's not likely to happen. You know, that's fully under the control of the town and the park and rec and their recommendation at this point is that that's not looking like a very, I think they were hoping that pardon me?
I don't see how we can. I just don't think we're going to be back to anything close to normal by then.
And I think that was the consensus, but there was still sort of the hope that they might not have to cancel it. But I I suspect that will be next to be canceled by, you know, the recommendation coming from them. And the final was really the soccer leagues and there, you know, there we had a number of representatives on AYSO and CYA and and again, the Alpine strikers and different reps that were talking and they too recognize that the likelihood of parents and children wanting to gather in groups for soccer is very low, but they're already working, let's say, on what I'll call alternative versions of what they used to do that would allow for, you know, fewer participants, social distancing, you know, not full-on games potentially. And and again, they recognize that the likelihood of that happening is still is relatively low as well, just because this could go well into the fall before any of the restrictions are relaxed that would allow them to play together. And but they're looking at, you know, again, are there any alternatives? I think their challenge there is because they have, in the Alpine strikers case, paid coaches and, you know, and it's a nonprofit. Their concern is is that they won't survive if this season is fully canceled and they're not able to compensate the the coaches in any fashion. So that was the primary concern there. So I think the consensus John reached in that regard to the Alpine strikers was to wait until the last possible moment to cancel that and see whether there wasn't some activity that could potentially take place on the in the soccer world. So it was, you know, honestly, summarizing it all, it was pretty much shut down, you know, with no real opportunity to to really look at anything specific at this point to reopen.
There was, there was a level of hope, I think is the best word, that if things do radically change, you know, what would the town do? And I I made it pretty clear that we would do everything we could to accommodate whatever schedules they wanted to implement. If there was a truncated season or or something similar to that, that we would create prioritization of the fields for their purposes. I think we all know that that's probably unrealistic, but it was, I think it was important for us to state that, you know, we remain committed to maximizing our playing fields for these purposes and the the people who are volunteering for these efforts are pretty extraordinary people who are, you know, working through frustrations of those parents and others who want to participate. So that we, I know we thank them much for what they're doing. The final item that I had in my update, I hope is, it's a positive one. It is a positive one. The farmer's market, the council last week directed staff to work with NILE on a slight increase of the price of the bags to help offset the ongoing costs of the town to the program. As of about noon today, the bags were already sold out. So that does not appear to have been an issue for those who are participating in the program. The the cost associated to the town for the program by upping the price of the bags by $5 reduced our, it reduced our cost by about half. So we're more like $3,500 than $6,000. So thank you for the recommendation. We were a little concerned that we were gonna, I think it's now put it to mess up a good thing, but thank you to the residents of Portola Valley for continuing to participate in the program and buying. That's my COVID update. I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Questions from the council. Craig has his hand up. Go ahead.
Um, yeah, I have a couple, two sort of, well, not directly related questions, but both about building. You mentioned that we were planning to start taking applications, which is is a little bit reminiscent of the the conversation we started off with about cultural arts. And if we don't know when things are going to be reopening, kind of doing stuff now to plan for what may or may not happen through the rest of the year. Given that we do not allow people to actually do construction, I I imagine you're thinking about what it means to take applications for permits when if that permit issues, they can't actually act on it.
Correct. Yeah, the 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 thinking behind this is is to, when, as we move through a reopening process, is to not create any bottlenecks in our system. And we want to set expectations in a proper way that you can imagine a scenario where we open up and people are just able to come in and apply for permits. We would not be able to process them in a way that would make some sense. So we would those that we can do now, and this is really on the building side more than the the planning side, those that we can process on the building side, do some review and get it up to a point where there would be some social interaction, we we would not move forward. But if we can do some of that work upfront, then it frees us later on to work on other things. And we know that there will be issues that we haven't contemplated yet through the reopening process that I'm going to need to dedicate staff to. So one of the mantras internally with staff right now is, you know, what can you do to to get it done and get it out of the way so we can concentrate on other issues and free up some space for that. So that's the thinking there.
And and would we extend the the timeout period on those? So if you if you don't, because they normally expire after two years, right? So would we say it's two years after construction is allowed again? So we give them, they still get two years, but from a date when they could actually start work as opposed to from the day we issue the permit and if they can't build for a while?
That that's one, that's one way to do it. We haven't worked out all the the details specifically to this, but that would be a way to to accommodate that issue.
Okay. Second building question was, you mentioned on budget that we don't expect there'll be much of a decrease in building activity. Do you know whether we had and if so, how much of a decrease in 2007, eight?
Off the top of my head, I I wouldn't want to get specific. So we saw a slight decrease, if I remember correctly from looking at historical records. Let me bring that back at the next meeting if I could, Craig.
Okay, yeah, exactly. I I, it's possible we'll see no or very little decrease, but my guess would be that anybody who was thinking about a big remodel or a big extension on their house is looking at their portfolio and saying, maybe I don't have as much cash as I thought. And so there may be a bit of a slowdown while that recovers. And then my third question was a a separate one, but it's it's one that's been increasingly kind of bugging me. As everybody's talking about moving towards reopening, one of the big important things seems to be the ability to scale testing beyond where it is now. And I I, you've showed us the county website earlier. I took the data for a number of tests that have been run in the county and entered it all in a spreadsheet and dragged it, added a seven-day moving average. And if you look at this blue line, I think I'm tearing my screen. You should all be able to see it hopefully. The blue line, this top one, is the total number of tests run in the county and that peaked on the 29th of March. And since then, we've been trending downwards. The county has been testing fewer and fewer and fewer people. The same trend has been happening at the state, at the national level, although the peak is a little bit later. It's more like beginning of April. So as our testing, total number of tests that we're running and the velocity of testing that we're doing is falling, I don't know how that jibes with what everybody is saying about we need to do more testing in order to get to a place where we can start reopening. I I don't know that there's much we can do about it, other than I'll be aware of it and be pressing the folks who are actually responsible for hopefully scaling the testing capacity to be cognizant of the fact that our ability to do tests does not seem to be increasing. It seems to be decreasing, or at least the number of tests is decreasing. And the numbers on an absolute level are also surprisingly low. Sorry, let me open this again. For example, you can't really see probably on the shared screen, the dotted lines. But on Sunday, there were fewer than 100 tests run countywide at a time when there were 76 patients in hospitals in the county. So you would expect that, at the very least, the nurses and doctors taking care of those patients in hospital were getting tested on at least some kind of regular basis, but that doesn't seem to be happening. And so I I'm concerned that if if what we need to be doing is more testing, we're not heading in the right direction and and more pressure and thought needs to be brought to bear to figure out how to make that go the other way. So not not really a question so much as an observation and something, you know, as you're as you're having meetings with other people who are responsible for things like this, something that might be worth worth bringing more attention to.
Well, I would, I would say generally speaking, you know, the 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 document that the staff is reviewing, the managers are reviewing as it relates to reactivation, we've, we've got some draft goals included therein and and goal number one is, you know, don't risk resident staff or visitors and goal number two is we don't want to reopen services in any way that increases cases or results that are for their closure at some point. So we we're using that as our foundation to develop any system, which, you know, there's going to be obviously a phasing of of those services, but clearly, we're going to be taking some direction from the county health officer and the state who both indicate that there needs to be a pretty healthy dose of testing. So it remains to be seen how they do it.
Okay, thank you. Mary Ann, is her hand up? Go ahead, Mary Ann. You're muted. You're still muted.
Okay, I just lost the screen. I have no idea what happened. Anecdotally, I can tell you that if you want to be tested in San Mateo County and you go through the Verily site and you go online and you take the questionnaire, the people I know who have tried, the only ones who were able to get tested were the ones who had gamed the system. So in other words, they just lied and said they'd been exposed to somebody or they lied and said they had asthma. A very good friend of mine who I'm certain had it, she could not meet the criteria and she could not get tested. So until they deal with that questionnaire, people are not going to get tested at the county event center.
I think the bigger problem is they they, I think they really just don't have enough tests or don't have enough.
Maybe that's it. I mean, there's something.
Process them and they're just, I mean, I think they're still, and I think this is happening everywhere. From what I can see is there's just not enough kits and the the you know, the the equipment is just not either not, there's not enough of it or it's not being used enough or it's not available enough for tests. So it's a, it's a it's a big problem if we're going to reopen things.
Also, it sounds like there's a huge question of reliability still.
Yeah.
If you can do repeat testing, then that resolves the reliability issue to some degree because you're taking multiple sample points. My understanding is that there's, there's enough capacity to handle the volume of testing they allow with the current restrictions, but there is not enough testing capacity to loosen the restrictions. And so I don't know how you get to enough testing capacity to loosen the restrictions if you don't start loosening the restrictions and take some test steps towards increasing the number of tests you're doing.
Yeah, you might need more machines, honestly.
Yeah.
Mary Ann, did you have other questions or comments on this one?
All over by hand now.
Okay. John, did you have any comments or questions?
No, not at this point.
Anne?
I'm good.
Okay. Does anyone in the public have a comment or question on the town manager report or on the COVID report, excuse me? Okay, I do not see any. So we will move on to.
Jeff, there is, there is one from Carter.
Okay, Carter, go ahead.
Let me, Carter, I'm going to allow you to talk. Hold on. There you go. Carter, you need to unmute it.
There you go.
I've got several projects underway and I wanted to know, you know, what the process is going to be, you know, to open those projects back up. You know, some of them, you know, one in particular is very close to, you know, completion and you know, where the homeowners aren't allowed to actually move into their finished home. And it seems like I would hope that those would be a higher priority, you know, than the new applications and that no new applications, you know, be processed until, you know, the existing ones, you know, are back underway.
Yeah, if I may, through the through the chair. Thank you, Carter. The, we don't anticipate accepting new planning applications until we're through any existing ones that are in-house or ones that we expected to bring in right around the time that we close things off. And I know that you're per the emails I saw today in direct contact with Laura and I'm sure she'll be reaching out on specifics related to the project you mentioned or any other ones. So thanks.
Yeah. Okay. That that was all, the only comment I had.
Okay, thank you. Other public comment on?
Okay, thank you. Other public comment on Jeremy's report? Okay. Uh don't see any. In that case, we will move on to item five, which is the consideration of the urgency ordinance on more treatment on evictions. Uh Kara, do you want to start on this one or is this Jeremy? Do you want to start?
Uh that would be Kara.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. So as you recall, last week, the town council reviewed an emergency ordinance which would impose a moratorium on commercial evictions. And it this this ordinance was largely modeled after the county of San Mateo's ordinance. Um and the county had um uh recently adopted the a a moratorium that only applied to unincorporated counties and it um it was certainly assisting other cities who wanted to adopt it within their own jurisdictions um to to take advantage of the ordinance that the county had adopted and the procedures and forms that that the county had adopted. The county's ordinance was um structured as sort of a stopgap, um which would really get it. It doesn't relieve the the tenant of paying rent, but as we discussed before, it's just a it's a rent deferral. Um and it complements the CARES Act and the SMC strong programs that are available for uh financial assistance for tenants uh including commercial tenants. Um but of course, there it takes a while for these funds to be released and dispersed. And so um the thought was that if landlords would uh give a um a rent deferral for a couple of months, uh that would allow the tenant to uh make an application for the funds. And then when the funds were received, those could be um remitted to the landlord. So um the council looked at the at the ordinance and um expressed really, I think, a preference that landlords and tenants um try to work these these types of issues out amongst themselves. And there were certainly some um landlords and tenants in town that I think have have been doing that. And um there uh but it you know, we the council thought that that um they would give the the landlords um and tenants in town another week to have those types of serious conversations. And if those conversations were fruitful and tenants didn't feel a need for a regulatory solution, that the council um would forego adopting a an ordinance. Um however, if the conversations were not fruitful, then the council expressed um an openness to um uh adopting an ordinance. So we have um brought back the ordinance. Uh I I think that um some of you may have some some input on whether those discussions were fruitful or not. Um if you do decide to move forward with the ordinance, there are two things I wanted to flag. One was um that we did make a slight modification to the ordinance that we introduced last week in terms of the rent deferral period. Um the original um or the ordinance that we had brought to you had the um deferral being activated at the at the end of the um uh expiration of the local emergency ordinance. And so that could be several months because the um typically cities and towns keep their local um ordinances, their local uh proclamations in effect for a while in order to um avail themselves of FEMA funding uh for various wrap-up activities. And so that would create a um a a long delay in receiving the red payments. So we went back and we looked at the county's ordinance and the county's ordinance actually um to uh started the um repayment period at the termination of the ordinance itself. So the county's ordinance expires on on May thirty first. It's a moratorium. It's a temporary moratorium. Um your the local ordinance that that we are proposing here also um expires on May thirty first. And so that would be the period for um counting the um time for repaying of the of the deferred rent. And um the other change that we made with respect to that rent deferral period is that um originally, we had proposed a six-month period. Um and then in a further iteration of the county's ordinance, um the county actually proposed a ninety-day period with three successive thirty-day extensions. So again, that we've incorporated that into the ordinance, and I think it is more in line with your discussions earlier, which was a a desire to really encourage the landlords and the tenants to get together and try to work um problems out amongst um each other. Uh the other thing that I wanted to raise that with respect to to the ordinance is that there um still needs to be a policy discussion, again, if you decide to adopt the ordinance, as to what um level of how to define a small business. And again, the county defined it um as a business that brings in less than two point five million dollars in gross receipts annually. So um that would be the recommendation to to again, try to mirror the the county ordinance. Um other cities that have recently adopted uh this moratorium have also used the 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 two point five million, as I mentioned last week, city of San Mateo appears to be an outlier there. Um definition of a small business is twenty five million dollars in in gross receipts. Since you um si- since last week, the cities of Menlo Park, Milbrae um and Pacifica have adopted uh similar uh moratorium ordinances. Um South City has adopted one, although I think they had adopted it as of the meeting last week. Um and East Palo Alto has it on its agenda for next week. And we.
Kara would add too that I understand that the San Carlos had it on their agenda, but they did not adopt one.
Yes, San San Carlos, thank you for that. San Carlos uh uh did not specifically decided not to uh direct their city attorney to to draft an ordinance at this time. And I don't believe there were any um tenants that's that expressed a concern um at San Carlos um council meeting when they brought this up. So with that, um I will uh leave it up to you for further discussion or or questions.
Okay, thank you, Kara. Uh Anne has been pursuing this for last since last week. Anne, do you want to uh update us or give us kind of your 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 view on all?
Sure. I think, you know, first of all, I want to thank, as I know, I can see on the participation, we have some landlords and tenants on the call. And thank you to all who really helped sort of inform, certainly from my perspective, some of the discussion we'll have tonight. So what I would like to do is to just really pass along at the highest level the the complexity of some of the the responses we got. And it was a bit surprising to me that it crossed the full spectrum um in terms of how landlords and tenants are dealing with the crisis to this point. And I would say that the the singular thread that pretty much permeated those discussions has been the difficulty everybody is having getting their arms around how you solve these issues because of the enormity of what the impact is on both small tenants, such as the ones we have in our owner in our four leased properties here, and also the challenges that the landlords and owners are facing too, as they're dealing with their lenders and other issues on their end. So it really does cut across both sides. So I think that I talked to, and I was just adding these numbers up, no either talked to or got emails from about seven or eight tenants that are only tenants. And then the three, what I'll call our biggest landlords in town as well, either a combination of emails or conversations or both. So a good cross-section, I think, or it's a very complete cross-section of what I think is happening. And I would suggest that the at the level of which we're considering this moratorium that it is going to be very difficult for there to be a, you know, a satisfactory conclusion in the near future in terms of the ability of landlords to necessarily be able to offer the kinds of concessions that would be required by the tenants to survive. And in looking at this moratorium, I think it's really, it would be only as a short-term backstop for the most difficult situations, and they do exist. There's clearly not a universal uh commentary that I would give you to say, gee, everybody's talking to one another and things are progressing. No, I think it's a very mixed bag. There are a number of places where that isn't happening in an effective way right now, and I wouldn't expect that to change just based on the communications I received. And I think that because the key to all of these negotiations and discussions, because it really is in many cases a three-stoiled effort where it's the landlord, the tenant, and the lender. And managing all three of those pieces is extremely challenging and for different reasons for different landlords, because again, the situations are different for all of them. And some, I think, have managed or are able to basically respond to their tenants differently and others are not or not willing to, whatever. It doesn't really, that is not the point. The point is whether how it will impact the community, because I think that's we're looking at it as our overarching concern is the face of the community and the protection of our smaller tenants in whatever way we may be able to help them through this crisis. So I would also say that it does require a fair amount of good faith and from both sides, from all sides. And I think at this point, that's the advice that we still would give to all of these you know, both tenants, landlords, and clearly the financial institutions, if they're not yet involved, will be involved as their their borrowers, the landlords, reach out to them to suggest that if they aren't getting the revenues from the tenants, they're not going to be able to make their mortgage payments. So the the situation is one where I wouldn't expect that in in enacting a moratorium this evening, we're going to solve these problems. Um and I would not want to have you think that that is the conclusion I reached, because I think the diversity of the issues, the complexity of the issues is such that these are all the decisions tenants are having to first face in what they're asking their landlords and then requires a reasonable assessment of what the tenant's prospects are. I mean, the best way to think about it is that for a lot of these tenants that are either closed down now or operating at partial capacity, they're basically re-underwriting a new business as they look to continue once they're out of COVID. So they are having to look at it as if they're a brand-new startup and what they're going to be able to generate coming out of this, coming out on the other side. And landlords are obviously faced with a dramatically lower income in many cases and in most cases. And that puts them into a very difficult position. Again, some may be more fortunate than others in terms of their holdings, et cetera, and their relationship with their banks, but clearly they are business people as well. So there's not any, I think, the decisions that they're making really require everyone to be acting in good faith, recognizing that they do have a singular goal, which should be to retain their tenants. That it's that it's in everybody's direct benefit on both sides of this equation to retain the tenants. So that's the commentary I would make at this point. And um obviously, we'll want to hear from some of the people who are listening and your comments and questions and as we as we move forward to look at this.
Okay, thank you, Anne. Uh I actually, I have one question. We we received a a letter earlier today, which I think was going to be entered into the record. So to write the the letter from 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 Boris Ephron.
Uh huh.
And he brought up the point of these of, you know, um lease extensions. And I that feels like a very different, I mean, that feels, you know, I understood his point in that letter, but I also feel like sort of starting to, you know, like mandating lease extensions feels like a very different intervention than than a eviction moratorium. Do Anne, do you agree with that?
Yes, I do, Jeff. I mean, again, that arrived just two hours before the meeting tonight. Um and it is a very different animal. And frankly, in a brief response that I sent to Mr. Ephron, I just said we wouldn't be discussing that tonight because it really frankly is a completely different approach. Um and would deal specifically with his views are on what the solutions might be.
Yeah, I mean, that feels like a level of kind of
Yeah.
intervention that I I'm not even sure we'd have the legal authority to do, let alone, you know, would it would it be the for best for for all all concerned? But uh
Yeah.
Are there other questions from the council for Kara or Anne on on this issue? Uh Craig, go ahead. And then John?
Yeah, it just getting to the question of what we have the legal authority to do. Um one one element of this proposed ordinance is um that we essentially force the landlords to give their tenants a hundred and eighty days beyond May thirty first a loan for the amount of rent outstanding and not to be able to charge any interest or late fees on that loan. If if we have the authority to do that, could we not also do the same for those landlords mortgages to essentially say we require the banks to issue or whoever the lenders are that have lent to those landlords um to essentially forgive their loan payments for the same period of time and not be able to charge any interest or late fees on those loan payments? What what's the difference between having the power to force a landlord to grant a loan to their tenant as opposed to forcing a lender to loan to their landlord borrower?
Um clicker.
Yeah. So I haven't I haven't looked at that issue um yeah in in um detail. The I think that this type of of ordinance is um generally not viewed as a um a contractual modification, although it has, it certainly has that impact and that effect. But what it is doing, it is, it's preventing a a landlord from serving a a you know, notice and to to um terminating the tenant's aid. And to that extent, cities always have 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 um is a well, it's a well-established principle that cities have the ability to control the grounds for eviction. And so um that's where you see, you know, rent, the the good cause rent control types of regulations that, you know, are very prevalent in in local cities. So that's sort of the um the police power that that is being exercised in these types of ordinances. Now, as to the um the the contractual relationship between a a landlord and, you know, a a bank that that, you know, may not even be in in your jurisdiction, I, you know, I think there's there's federal uh preemption issues um regarding those those types of of um documents, but you know, it's
The property that the property that's acting as collateral, if the if it's collateralized loan against the property, that property is in our jurisdiction.
Yes, the property is is within your jurisdiction. That's true. Um so, yeah, I uh it's it's an it's an interesting issue. Uh I just, yeah, I I have not seen those types of of uh local ordinances.
Yeah, I mean, I I I understand the 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 part about preventing evictions and that that we could have the power to do that. It's really just section two C that I'm concerned about. In terms of, you know, the fact that we were we're essentially forcing these landlords to grant their tenants a um eight-month-long loan for the total amount of rent that are the or the rent that accumulates during that period, I suppose. Um at least eight months, right? We could extend this beyond May thirty first potentially, in this case, even longer than that. And and
Yes.
if if we have the power to force one side of a of an agreement to lend the other side the proceeds of that agreement, I don't know why we couldn't apply that to banks also. And and I'm a little hesitant to apply it to landlords and create a cash flow problem for them.
Yeah.
Uh in order to, you know, uh bail out the cash flow situation that the that the tenants are having without also looking at the as Anne said, the complex relationship with the third party, uh which would be, you know, any any potential lenders. Um and 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 as Anne said, you know, that that may not be And 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 as Anne said, you know, that that may not be applicable in some cases, depending on. How the how the property is owned. But, you know, again, in in section E3, if we're going to define a small business that we're trying to protect as an entity with gross receipts of less than. Some number of millions of dollars per year. Our landlords, I am almost sure that even the biggest of them are making less than a million dollars a year in gross receipts from their from leasing out their properties. So if we're trying to protect small businesses. I I don't think anybody's making a million dollars a year in rent anywhere in Portola Valley. It 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 just seems, again, as I said last week, a little one sided, but that's starting to veer into more discussion than question, I think.
Yeah, John had his hand up, but Anne, did you want to respond to that or do you want to wait till John asks his questions?
You know, I think that the the one thing to keep in mind, Craig, just as you're looking at it is that. I don't, I think that. In conversations, it it's not a zero sum game from the perspective that I don't expect all of the tenants to stop paying the landlords during this time period. I think that, again, it's really an effort to make sure that those who can pay and are willing to try and figure out exactly what they can pay. And that's certainly been the input that I've gotten from the tenant side. That that the argument that people are going to use it to defer it and really just. Kind of do it to stick it to their landlord is not the intention. It's really a last ditch. If you are out of money and your. Entire business is shut down and you're not generating any money, how could you pay rent? And and that's a very dire situation, but unfortunately, I have to say that I'm hearing more and more of that situation where people are just unable to pay their rent and. They would like to continue and I I still think just from my perspective, because I have other clients that are working on this, they. Are not expecting to have any return to a normal environment. And as I said earlier, the key there is that. The ability to really underwrite the business as if it's a startup coming out of COVID and 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 to be able to to sit down and have the discussions. With the landlords because it starts there and then it moves up the chain and there's no question it has to move up the chain. And it's really a matter of this just at least allows them. Time to hopefully start to recover if they're able to do that, if they have to forestall an eviction.
Thanks, Anne. John, go ahead. Thanks for waiting.
Yeah, getting to the point of the actual value of a of a rent deferral or eviction moratorium in our unique situation, and I understand that. The likelihood that there's a probably a different story for every tenant out there and every every landlord in town. It's like some slight different variation in what they can do and what they. With the relationship is, but in your talking to these folks, did you get a sense from any. Of them, from half of them or all of them or none of them about whether or not. An eviction mortem might be of use to the tenants and might be useful for them.
I did. Two were very clear that it would be extremely useful to them. And in one case, it was dubbed essential. And others suggested that it would at least allow them to see, you know, to hopefully be able to continue to discuss with their landlord, how they could avoid this. That it would, you know, it would help them to be able to at least sit down to say, we don't want to go here. We're trying to work with you and. And here's where we see our numbers now and and then the future, just based on, you know, projections when they could come out of COVID and how they can operate their businesses now. Again, I my expectation, just coming so that, you know, you're sort of to get a sense of it as well is that. There are enough individual situations in town already where I think we will have fallout, whether this is in place or not. And so I kind of, I think that it's important to prepare the community for that. And it's not going to be because the landlords created that or caused that. And so. In in however, we would message this or whatever we decide to do. It's just a very, very dire situation for many because you can imagine if you just shut down your business and your. You have employees that you furloughed and they're not yet able to access all the PPP dollars. Because, you know, the other side of this equation is is that the. This allows for additional time for some of these programs to come into effect. What's been clearly not happening, just like the testing, Craig, you talked about. The funding, as we heard today on today's meeting, they've practically exhausted the first round of that funding, yet. All of us know very few people who got it. I have one client who did get it and that's the only one I've heard of. To date, who did get their funding. And so it's coming slowly. It's, you know, there's just a lot of hurdles. So. It's to me a real stopgap and I don't expect people will use it to. Improve their situation. It's really only going to be used if they are faced with no other alternative.
Excellent. Okay. If there are no other questions from the council, I will open this up for public comments. If anyone from the public wants to comment on this, you can raise your hand. I see David Cardinal's hand up. David, go ahead.
Hold on, David, I will unmute you. There you go. You need to unmute yourself at your end too.
Thank you. Yeah, Jeff and Jeremy, I sent you a letter earlier today or a note earlier today. I don't know about eight months or six months or nine months, but I've. Reached out to several of the businesses in our town. They're all trying to get loans from the government. And as we've all read, heard and heard tonight, those loans are backlogged or whatever. And it's going to take them one to three months to get that money. Now, the landlords are in different situation, not all of our landlords are small. Some are very rich, frankly, and we can go out and do that offline. But I think the notion that the businesses need a little breathing room to get those loans in. So having a three month deferral. Is not, we're not talking eight months or 10 months or 12 months. We're talking, these people have applied in good faith and they're our merchants and they're our service businesses. And they've been here forever, in many cases, 20, 30, 40 years. So cutting them some slack. And yes, they've tried to work with the landlords and some have been great. I imagine some are just perfect. But not all of them have been and some are just basically not willing to give an inch. And they're not willing to do anything or give a day or a week or a month. And as a citizen and a 30 and odd years resident. I value our businesses and I would like to see us, if we're going to stand up for anything. Stand up for them a little bit and help them get through like. A few months until they get the money they're supposed to get from our government. So that'd be my my suggestion.
Okay, thank you, David. Stanley Lowe is up next.
Yeah, hi, this is Stanley Lowe. Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
So I just want to report you what's going on in my village square. Basically, I have two tenants did not pay me. And which are very normal. They've been late for 30 days continuously in all these years. So. We, there's no reason we call them. And so even we call them in a good time, they still pay us late. So we we didn't receive one request for rent concession. So anybody basically asked us to extend the credit. We're entitled to say, hey, give me some of your financial information. And so far, we have not get it yet. If we get it, we're seriously to work with them. And basically, the for Portola Valley. Is the moratorium going to really, really work? I think the landlord, as I repeatedly stated, need the tenant more than than anything else because. How can he replace a tenant doing this kind of market? And this neighborhood tenant and just like other haystacks. And that there's any. Anybody else know how to do this business on the salary? Anybody is very limited. And so the the reason we we will definitely work with all the tenant, but the minute the moratorium came out. The end result and just like it happened in Millbrae. And nobody paid me immediately, nobody. I can including 25 fitness, they don't pay. And they are huge. They take 120 million a month for membership in the internet. And they still charge a member and they don't pay us. And we are small compared to what the giant that they are. And so the end result is in Portola Valley, we're probably going to face. These tenants, oh my God, I got this advantage. So for some bona fide people, I agree, they really need a help. The minute we see the financial, we know. Right? The minute we, but some some of a tenant have a multimillion dollar house, have a very little loan. And they should do this time to appreciate the landlord, give them low rent in all these years. And make them a good living. And not just taking advantage of this moratorium. So. You know, if the city have different alternatives, hey. Can any landlord sign agreed that you're not doing eviction? I'd be glad to sign it because I would never do that. And I see some other my stupid friends try to evict some the tenant. My God, after one year, they says. The tenant find me so bad and it cost me 100,000 today. And I I I made a mistake. I only fight a rent for 60,000. Now my legal fee is 100,000. And I I will be in the same conclusion. There's no reason I do eviction because. During this time, during the good time, even take a long time right now. Should be even longer. So the the reality is, I don't think any. Landlord in Portola Valley have the intention to do the eviction anyway. And they might play some strategy, not like me, to play harbor a tenant. But the bottom line, if tenant doesn't pay and do they have to really have the guts to. Get rid of the tenant? I doubt it. I really doubt it. So. This thing not going to happen. Why the city was want to give this kind of ordinance to encourage all the tenants. Hey, we got a chance now to pay, even they know we're not going to evict them. So it make us is this thing can drag six months. And meantime, as I say, we are not. A big landlord like, you know, like other institution, they have a limited fund. And we do have a mortgage. My property tax is talking about $7,500 a month. And my mortgage is it's all it's it's all added up. It doesn't really, I have probably only left, but every month left us five to 6,000 a month. So I've been doing that. I've been contributing my property tax. So basically, I think the city should have seriously considered. As a practical reason, even use adopt the moratorium. To protect the small business people, yes, but the end result probably going to make the landlord. Even very hard to get their rent right now. At least I get some of my rent right now automatically, some good tenant, they know. And they they also understand, you know, if they sit on landlord position, they should contribute. Some, if they don't want to pay, we'll work with them. Like I didn't call the the two tenant. It's very, very. Very, I know their struggle, so there's no reason I push them. They use my back lot. I have a almost one third of acre in the bath. They put a haze there. And way back to I bought a property, I say, hey, you gotta pay me this. This worth at least 5,000 a month. We send them a a contract. They never signed it. We never pushed them. We never get a one dime. So based on this, you know that I'm a good landlord. I've been seriously worked for them. But I don't want to end up with somebody can afford to pay me three months and take your ordinance and don't pay me. So that's all my. Opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Stanley. Okay, David, you have your hand back up, but before I I'll come back to you, but is does anyone else who hasn't commented want to comment? Lisa Green, go ahead. Lisa, you probably need to unmute at your end.
There we go. Thank you all for even considering this. We really appreciate your work and thoughts on this. And I've been in town for 20 years and I'm in a situation where I've got two completely opposite things. I've got one essential business and one non essential business. And the non essential business is pretty much closed down and with no end in sight because it is. A non essential gym and right now fitness is like one of the things that we're like, oh no, we're not opening those. PT is a different. Animal and we do have to see patients who absolutely need to come in, but that's a small percentage. Of the clients that need to come in. We're, you know, trying to be really. Innovative and using all the telehealth kinds of things that we can do and and doing that. But the landscape has really changed in what is going to happen with businesses, not just. Ones like mine, but do serve the community for a very long time. And none of us are thinking that this is going to be a short term issue. I'm looking at a year out. Trying to survive and trying to see if we can even survive to get through the year. I'm lucky, my landlords were talking and they've always been great through the two 2008 crisis. So. You know, I have that in my favor, but I think that. There isn't any business in town that is going to want to use a moratorium to screw their landlord. We're all just trying to survive. And I think that for some people who are not as fortunate as I am, that I've talked to. This moratorium would be very helpful to them. And helpful to the town. And give them a chance to get what they need. I have some of my people that are already getting their $1,200 checks, their. EDD unemployment for the hours that we've had to cut them. We're sitting on our PPP that's, you know, you know, in in closing. So we're lucky. Hopefully that'll come through, but a lot of people haven't seen any of that in town. And so I would really hope that you guys would consider to at least do something to give them a little bit of room. Thanks.
Thank you, Lisa. And, you know, as a as a one time client of PT, I appreciate everything you're doing for you have done over the years. So thank you. David, go ahead.
Okay, first of all, I'd like to congratulate Stanley. I know he's made a huge. Fortune frankly, from coming from Hong Kong, China to here. And owns, according to his own account, many, many office buildings and multiple mansions, which is great. And it's wonderful that he owns businesses or real estate here in Portola Valley. But I would ask him, has he ever done anything to actually accommodate any of his tenants? Has he ever actually bent over for them who serve us? I I just don't, I mean, I think that's a problem.
Jeff, I think this this line of comments and questioning is actually directly opposed to the public comment we just approved earlier.
David, I I mean, I under you've got to address the council and I mean, I it just you're you're sort of you're veering into the place of of you're directing this to Stanley. It's that's you need to talk to us about the policy, please.
Fair enough. I think the policy should be that, yes, people. Landlords should help out our businesses and we should help out our businesses. And in the event that landlords are not willing to help out our businesses. We should step in because we need those businesses and the two to three month moratorium. Is just a deferral until the loans come in. It is not going to. I think that'd be a small thing.
Okay, thank you. Stanley, go ahead. Stanley, do you need to unmute yourself maybe?
Oh, yeah. Hey, David.
You're talking to us, not David. I I sorry.
I want to quickly respond. I made my business not through Hong Kong or China people. And I'm an American citizen and I. And I'm an American citizen and I give, I build my business through, give people values. I'm a Realtor. I give a low commission, huge service, provided them tons of bonus. Now I've made it today. That's what I give back to the community, same as all my tenants. I tell you right now, just like one of a tenant, three years I haven't increased him a dime. Because she say I'm, I'm over sixty years old. And Stanley, don't increase me. We even never sent him a bill. So I just want you aware of it. The, the secret of our, you say that that made a lot of money on the mansion and all this. We made money very hard away. I work eighteen hours a day, seven days a week. So I think that you can make more money if you do the same way I do. All right, that's all my comment. Thank you.
Okay. I don't see any more hands up, so we will bring it back to the council for discussion. And why don't you start us off?
All right, I'm unmuted. I think that in the equation that we're really considering tonight, that in, I agree with many of the comments. I think Lisa articulated very well, particularly in her summation, which is that I don't expect people to take advantage of this moratorium in order to again, improve or to, to basically hurt their landlords. This is not what it's about. People are very much in very difficult straits and a very, very murky and unclear picture going forward. And again, universally, I did hear from all the people I talked with on the tenant side and others that I've worked with, that it's, as I said at the beginning, they're basically re-underwriting their businesses right now. So that's an amazingly stressful time period. And I know a lot of you have done the same thing in this group, so you can appreciate how that looks for them today. And so I think this is absolutely something we should support for our businesses. Because it sends the right message about what the community, the value they create and how beloved they are for the community. And I don't expect it'll be utilized, or if it is, it's going to be the unique one or two circumstances, and I hope it isn't. But if it needs to be, I really think it's important that we have it there for our local tenants. So that's where my vote would go.
Okay. John, why don't you go next?
Yeah, I, I do like the idea of this as a backstop. It is pretty extraordinary situation we're in. And I think the businesses in town need to have this as a hopefully unused option. I, I do not believe that the, that the landlords will end up having this come back and bite them hopefully. And of course, that's always a possibility. Hopefully it's a remote one. But I'm, I'm in support of going, of moving ahead.
Craig, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I think there, there've been a number of comments and interesting points raised tonight. I, um, you know, I, I think of what we, what we want and what I've heard people asking for and arguing in favor of a, a, you know, one or two month delay so that whatever financing or SBA loans or PPP or other CARE Act or whatever follows on from it, monies might come through. If what we want is a one or two months delay, then maybe that's what we should write this as. As it currently stands, this is at least an eight months delay. And potentially much longer if we, if we extend the ordinance, which the ordinance provides for. So if, if we want it to be two months, not eight months, that would be a change I'd be in favor of making. And might be able to support. You know, I, I think the, the question of the businesses being beloved by the community, I think is also an important one. And I'm not, I'm not blind to it. I fully appreciate it and I, you know, I'm a patron of and, and greatly enjoy all, or not all, but a large number of the businesses in town that are tenants. But at the same time, you know, I, I'm quite glad that we have, uh, whatever scale, we have individual landlords who are not banks, who own the properties in town, who are the landlords of those tenants. I don't think these tenants would like to see their landlords get their properties repossessed by the banks. And now they have to make rent payments to the banks who will be, and, and future rent increases controlled by banks or by whoever the bank sells the property onto, if they ever manage to dispose of it in who knows what kind of real estate market we're going to be facing. I, I, you know, my own personal inclination through many years in business is that landlords are just always a lot easier to deal with than banks. Even the worst landlord is better to negotiate with than the best bank. If you have a loan to a bank and you are not making your payments, you try and go and negotiate with them, they will bend you over backwards and take every penny they can squeeze out of you. And when you go to a landlord and you explain to them that your business is on hard times, you think things might get better, but let's work it out together. So you don't have to find new tenant. Those conversations always, even with the worst landlord, go better than the best conversations with the bank about reorganizing your, your loan terms. So, you know, protecting tenants from landlords without protecting landlords from banks, as this ordinance does, is something that just really cuts against the grain of every experience I've had in twenty plus years of running small businesses. And I, I, I'd be supportive of reducing it from, you know, eight plus months to a much shorter period, if that's what we want to do. But even then, it, it still seems to me a partial one-sided protection for only a fraction of what we might want to protect. And that it could have dramatic unintended consequences, like a lot of the commercial properties in town ending up being owned by banks. Which, yes, it would be devastating if, if we have those tenants go out of business and move out and we didn't have the businesses we're all used to. It would also not be good for the community at all if banks became major property owners in town. So I, I'm, I'm very concerned about unintended consequences and putting our thumbs too firmly on one side or the other of the scale of these, you know, contracts between the landlords and the tenants. And would much rather see them work out some agreement if they can between themselves without, you know, putting our thumb firmly on the side of the tenants by, by enacting this ordinance. And, and especially sections, you know, whatever it is to see of the ordinance, which, which effectively forces landlords to issue fairly long-term loans at no interest to their tenants.
Okay, thanks, Craig. Just quickly, Anne, I'm just curious, if we were to, if, if we did reduce the term, we did say instead of six months, you know, three months or some shorter time. What is that, you know, does that make, what, what happens to the, the, the ordinance in that situation?
I think, Craig, you, you stated that it would be, I, I disagree with a number of things that you said. But the, the main one is that this is only a ninety day and they'd have to apply for the extensions, as Cara mentioned. There would be three thirty day extensions that would be required to take it out to six months. And that's the longest the time period just could go.
So it's, it's three months past the termination of the ordinance, which currently would be May first. So currently five months, but it could be longer than that. And it could be as much as eight months, even as drafted with the, with these multiple ninety day extensions.
I don't think so. No, I think, I think, again.
Well, two, two months plus hundred and eighty days is six months. Sorry, it's eight months.
But again, it's not, it doesn't take effect. If you look at the, it actually doesn't take effect until it doesn't, the clock doesn't start running until the end of the period to May thirty first. That's when the clock starts running, not, you know, today, all the way through until there. So I think that's where the count is incorrect.
But to, to my view of it is if, if my rent is due today, I owe a thousand dollars today and I don't pay it. I do not need to potentially pay that money until a hundred and eighty days after May thirty first, which will be eight months from now. And the landlord is essentially loaning me that thousand dollars interest free for eight months.
Right now, you've already paid for April. So let's just take that off the equation here. So you're already a month, you've, you've added a month in there. Some people have even paid beyond that and have prepaid it. So the maximum, the absolute maximum would be seven months.
Unless we extend this beyond May thirty first.
Right.
So, so the way it's written, it is a little confusing because it does say they'll tender the full amount within ninety days. That's a three-month extension.
Right.
And we think between three and, between ninety days and a hundred and eighty days, they have to actually show documentation.
Exactly. So there's a, the, the reason that we went to that language is that it has a higher level of protection for the landlords so that they have, they're requiring additional documentation to show that the tenant isn't making money and does not want, or they got their funding and aren't willing to spend it for rent. So again, it's predicated on good faith actions on both parts. And I don't think there's going to be a rush to anybody using this. I think this is only if they don't secure their funding and their businesses either continue to not operate at all or in such a reduced scale that they just can't meet their obligations as they're currently structured. And frankly, I disagree with your comments about banks. I have had a lot of experience in that arena as well. And in an environment like this where the, there is a changing landscape on real estate values that hasn't even been factored in yet. They are going to be the first to come back and to say, we're going to have to restructure based on what's going to happen. Not the first, but they're going to be under a norm that pressured themselves to clean out their balance sheets.
Yeah, my, my experience was that the Royal Bank of Scotland stole my company from me in a, in a very similar situation once, so. Different, different. Yeah.
Well, I've never worked with the Bank of Scotland. Sorry, can't comment on them.
They were facing some issues of their own at the time.
Okay. Mary Ann, why don't you, why don't you go in? Why don't you weigh in here?
Thank you, Jeff. While I hear my colleague and I appreciate the burden on our three largest landlords, this is not a free pass on paying rent. It's a rent deferral. It's throwing our small businesses a lifeline to make it through the next three months until their PPP money comes through and the path forward is a little bit clearer. I think one of our duties as council members is to steward the collective health of our community. And our small businesses are a very rich and beloved part of our community. Right now, our small businesses are really hurting. And I think the least we can do is to offer an option to them such as this ordinance. So I am in favor of the urgency ordinance establishing a moratorium on evictions for non-payment of rent of businesses that are directly impacted by the COVID pandemic. Thanks.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, I share Craig's concern about this being one-sided. I mean, I, we, when I talked to the county council two weeks ago about this, we talked about the possibility of a, I guess I'd call it a foreclosure moratorium or something similar. They really didn't have an answer for it at the time, and I haven't heard anything since, whether that's really even, even possible. I could see some things that would make that more complicated, but, um, so, yeah, I mean, I, I do, I sure, I share Craig's concerns. I, I think if, if we're, if, you know, if, if we're going to enforce the three, the ninety day language, I think I can be comfortable with this. You know, I, I, I hope, I don't, I don't have any reason to, to think that, Anne, that you're wrong about businesses not using it. I, I hope that's true. I, I guess, I, I, it's, I'm not comfortable either way, to be perfectly honest. I'll probably, I think I will support it just because I think overall, I, I guess I, I, I want to feel, I want to do something. And I want to, you know, just provide, even if it's a small, small safety net for somebody. It makes a small difference. I think it's worth it, but any other comments on it? Go, go ahead, Craig. Craig, I think you're muted.
Yes, you're right. I just wanted to address another point that's been raised briefly here. I, I think it, it's important for me to say that in considering this issue, I think it's very important to absolutely not look at the country of origin or economic background or any other such aspect of any landlord or any tenant in town. And I think that bringing those elements into this conversation was inappropriate. So I, I just wanted to make that comment before we moved on.
Agreed. Yeah, I, the bottom line here is we're concerned about the, the health of the town or small businesses because they are, really are, at the end of the day, a part of our, our community and have been. David, go ahead one more time and then we'll, we'll, I think we'll come back for motion.
Just to be really clear, I, I would never, ethnic origin or rate, none of that matters to me. It's just, I was just commenting that if you read, I'm not going to comment about the person because I can't. It's a big piece of his backstory of how he got here. I was just complimenting him on what he was able to do. So God forbid, no, I would never in any way entertain, which has never occurred to me to think about that as an issue. I just want to make that clear.
Understood. Thank you. Anne, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to move approval of the urgency ordinance of the town council of the town of Portola Valley, establishing a moratorium on evictions for non-payment of rent by small business commercial tenants directly impacted by the COVID nineteen pandemic.
What's the fill-in-the-blank number for millions of dollars?
Good question. I, I think we should follow the county, frankly. I mean, probably the two and a half. I don't think we need San Mateo's twenty-five million.
Put another way, is there, is there any business that has, is a tenant in town that we wouldn't consider a small business?
Yeah, I'm not sure that it would make that, there may be a tenant that's a venture capital firm or something. I don't know.
Yeah, you know, it's, it's, it's a, it's a good question. I don't know and I didn't, that was never asked nor, I don't know if we have any way to really derive that. I think probably the best barometer of that, Jeremy, might be our sales tax revenue.
Yeah. And through the chair, I, I have no indication, two point five million seems entirely appropriate. I don't think anyone's above that. Thank you.
I, I, two point five would be fine with me. Mary Ann, do you have your hand up?
Oh, I just wanted to second the motion.
Okay. Moved by Anne, seconded by Mary Ann. Any other comment? Okay, Sharon, roll call vote, please. Sharon.
Muted.
Sorry. Councilmember Wenger.
Aye.
Councilmember Richards.
Aye.
Councilmember Hughes.
Nay.
Vice Mayor Derwin.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. We will move on then to item number six of liaison reports. Anne, the report.
Yeah, I think we covered my only one this week, which was the field schedule meeting that we had yesterday. I don't think there was anything that I didn't report on relative to the discussion that we had, so that's it.
Okay, John. John, I think you're muted.
Oh, sorry about that. Yeah, so the same thing, we covered mine as well. The cultural acts committee meeting to cancel the summer's events. That was it.
Craig.
I did not have any that I need to discuss.
Okay, Mary Ann.
I have four.
Of course.
I know. And it's only been a week and there's Zoom meetings. Okay, the CCG ledge committee met last week. Can, what? Okay, the CCG ledge meeting met last week. As you all know, the legislature is home, working from home. When they come back is the big mystery, maybe May fourth, but who knows? The only deadline they have is June fifteen. That's when they have to pass the budget. The only deadline they have is June 15th. That's when they have to pass the budget. There will be hearings, COVID-19 hearings, which I think might be starting this week. I can't remember. They're expecting a bare bones budget, maybe some money going to wildfire prevention, housing homelessness, and then COVID-19. The, our lobbyist said that the governor said, if your, if your deal doesn't, if you, if you, if your ask or your legislation doesn't deal with those wildfire, housing homelessness, COVID-19, we don't want to hear it. So some of the things that CCG was following are not really happening, such as seamless. It's sort of on hold. That's the, the idea of bringing all the transit under one umbrella. As I'm sure you know, transit is hemorrhaging since people are not riding transit and the universe is quite bleak. The climate resiliency bond will probably be more of a stimulus bond to help the state get back on its feet. They do have a very good rainy day fund, but they could easily see all of that gone in a year. 2021 will be very busy. I think that's it. So CCG meeting, this was my last meeting as chair. And we did have a presentation by Josh Abrams from 21 Elements. And let me see if I can find my notes because I'm not going to remember that. Okay, he talked about Rena Six overview. The HCD is going to release the numbers for the region in the spring. In May, there'll be a draft blueprint. July, the, the draft methodology will come out and we'll have some hints at the allocation for each city. See, as you all know, Rena's are going to be bigger and available sites are going to be smaller. And I'm sure, as I've told you before, we're still expecting two to three times the number for the region. And it doesn't matter if we are sitting on top of a tinderbox and it doesn't matter if we've all been shut down for a global pandemic. It's still the same right now. He had a slide presentation that was really good, and I think I'm going to send you all the link to that. But he did talk about the sites inventory. There's going to be increased scrutiny for the small, large and non-bake it sites. There's going to be a limit on reusing sites. There's going to be a definition of what bake it sites are. So it's going to be just a lot harder to do. And he started talking about what can you do about it? Conduct the sites inventory early, collaborate about feasibility analysis, collaborate on your housing element, start rezoning and see this as an opportunity. Again, I will send you the link. Then we, let's see what we did. Alrighty. We approved the final 2019 congestion management program for the county. We had a pretty long discussion on an item that was about signing a contract with this firm called Streetlight Data for a subscription to their services for a year and the amount of $275,000. This is like a big data company that helps cities analyze traffic and transportation projects. And it, see, I don't think it's relevant for Portola Valley, but a lot of the big cities really like it. But people were really skittish about, first of all, spending $275,000 on this, but more spending their city's money because there is also another component where if you want to subscribe, you have to pay. And I think it goes from $10,000 to $40,000. But if you were to subscribe on your own, it would be $99,000. People were saying the data that's going to be collected now isn't going to be relevant. The consultant said, you're looking at archive data anyway. It doesn't matter. So in the end, there was a little bit of a compromise and we approved it, but we're not going to sign the contract for six months. Then there was another sort of pro forma where we approved the fiscally constrained list of projects for MTC for the update of Plan Bay Area 2050. And then we had a kind of a weird little item brought to us by Cliff from Brisbane talking about having what I call a COVID corner on the CCG agenda for the next few months so that cities could share interesting things they're doing. I talked about our mayor's letter where Jeff writes his little grandfatherly letter every night to the community and it makes everybody feel warm and cozy and tucked in. They were very interested to read that mayor's letter, Jeff. And I also talked about, I also talked about the bingo game, the wildflower bingo. And so in the end, we did approve that idea to have that little COVID corner on the agenda, but not for too long and at the end of the agenda. And then we elected finally.
I'm not writing it, am I?
Pardon me?
I'm not writing it, am I?
Ooh, that's a good idea.
Oh, no.
No, I didn't, I did not volunteer you to do that. We did elect a new CCG chairperson, Marie Swong, hardest surname, Dwong, and a CCG vice chairperson, Davina Hurt. And I noted that we made history. It was the first time a chair and a vice chair were elected via Zoom during a global pandemic. And also the first time both the chair and the vice chair are women of color. Alrighty, my next meeting was the Express Lanes JPA meeting. I did that on April 10th. And the big item, the big discussion item was the, where is this? Forgot the wrong thing. I, I remember what it was though. It's the loan, the $100 loan that the TA is going to go out and get for the Express Lanes project. And so there's one item on the, Anne would know the terminology for this, you know, the loan documents where, let me see what they're calling it. It's a 0.6% credit enhancement fee or risk fee. So the question was, is it appropriate to, and that would be $600,000 on a $100 million loan. And for comparison, we only have $500,000 going into the equity program. So the discussion was, is it appropriate in an inter-agency transfer of public agencies to charge a risk fee? And secondly, if it is appropriate, is that the correct percentage? So we had quite a discussion and next we'll go to the TA and then it will come back to us. And then my last meeting was Fizzler and that was on Monday. And all we really did was approve the new conflict of interest agreement and that's the other one we did. It was a conflict of interest and the amended JPA agreement for the San Francisco Creek Joint Powers Authority because in the past, it was the flood district that sat on the JPA, one of the members, and now it'll be the Fizzler. But one other little interesting thing we talked about at Fizzler was the monies that have come in from the cities, as you all know, the cities are all helping and they're paying between $25,000. That's what we're paying. And then the next largest cities are paying 40 and then the next largest are paying 55. And we have gotten most of the payments, not all, but there is still that little pesky issue of Woodside choosing to pay $15,000 instead of $25,000. But we still haven't been able to talk about this. I'm not sure why. And what's going to happen is we're going to be invoiced in July for the next year's fee. So I think we really need to get this under control because other cities might want to pay less if Woodside gets away with it. Right? So that's all my reports.
Thank you. Monday, we had an executive committee meeting for Pencil Clean Energy. The one thing that's sort of interesting, I'll say is the PG&E bankruptcy case is moving forward. They, two weeks ago, they had sort of everyone's approval, including the governor's office. Governor's has basically said he will, he will, he will back this with the understanding that he will, he will, you know, show no mercy if they're not living up to everything he's asking them to do, which wasn't, didn't turn out to be that much. The one little potential monkey wrench now is that the fire victims who signed off in December are apparently have, having second thoughts because a significant pay, significantly a fraction of the payment to the fire victims is in PG&E stock, which is not doing well. And so there's, there's been some, I mean, the, the phrase they use, so the, Sam Licardo's office's group is still kind of pursuing this, but the phrase they've used is they're sort of under the basket waiting for any rebounds in case the shot doesn't go in. So they're, they're, it's moving forward. The PUC is, has not actually formally approved it, but they've approved other things PG&E has been asking for as if they're, as if they're counting on PG&E being there in six months. So it's looking like it's, you know, the, it's looking like it's going to happen. That said, PG&E's credit rating is junk. They are going to have a nightmare trying to collect, raise the money they need to actually start doing everything they said they do in the bankruptcy plan, probably worse than they anticipated. It's probably going to go forward, but we're probably going to be looking at this again within a year in some, some, some venue, whether it's another bankruptcy or something else. That was Monday. Tuesday, I had coffee with Captain Corpus from the sheriff's office and Fire Chief Lindner. This is short, it's a half hour, half hour, just discussion with, with the community. Few questions, mostly just talking about, just asking about enforcement questions and a few, you know, details about what's, what's allowed and what's not allowed. The big one is just gardening and, you know, you can, you can, you can have your landscapers out for fire safety, but nothing else. We keep reminding people of that and I get a lot of questions personally for that as well. But otherwise, it was, it was a nice, just a nice, short conversation. Christina and Rob were in the same, they were actually at the sheriff's office together, which I thought was kind of questionable, but they were six feet apart, so I can't, I can't say anything. But it was a good talk. Other than that, I think most of you have been on the county calls, which have been, I think, useful. So that's what I have, except that my census, my census spot is now. I did a census video for the county, trying to get everyone to respond to their census. If you haven't already, go to my, my sense, 2020census.gov and fill in your census and remind people to do the same. We're, we're maybe like third or fourth in the county in terms of response rates. And ideally, we get 100% response online. So just remember, do your census.
Yeah, I think we're 482nd nationally or something like that amongst cities of 1,000 to 10,000 people. Yeah, move up the rankings.
It's not like we don't have internet access here. So we should, we can do this. That's all I have. I guess, Jeremy, you're up.
Yeah, just two, two items. One, I think some council members may have seen that there was some discussion on the forum the last couple of days about some vegetation management work happening at Blue Oaks. The, I have a status update, which is we had our, and we had members of our staff and our inspector out over the last day. I should be getting more information about where things are tomorrow. The, the work is being undertaken under the planned due and development that was adopted by the council in 1999 and the vegetation management, management work in there. So it is something that has been prescribed. Certainly have questions around erosion control and other issues. So once I learn more, I will let you know. I've been in close contact with Leo at the ranch because they've obviously got some concerns about what they're seeing. So more to come. And the other thing to mention, I know all the council members are aware, but just for the purposes of the, of the public discussion, we did have an armed robbery yesterday in town. We're very hopeful that the ALPRs will generate some information. So I'm in close contact with Captain Corpus. It does appear to be a crime of opportunity. I don't believe that it poses a threat to the residents at all, but it's very unfortunate. And we put out messages this morning. I have not heard from, I've only heard from a few residents who had some additional questions. So was unfortunate that we weren't the first ones to put it out. So we did apologize to residents in regards to that this morning. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Hey, any questions on the, on Jeremy's report? Okay, that brings us to the digest. There's a canceled meeting and links to my grandfatherly letters. Any, any comments on the digest? If not, then.
Yes, it did remind me, we will be holding next Thursday, a virtual wildfire prep committee meeting. So that agenda will be out Friday.
Okay.
One quick question before we adjourn. Is our next meeting two weeks from tonight, the 29th?
The next council meeting is next Wednesday. It's the regularly.
Still regular, it's still weekly. Okay, just to.
We have, the, the way that we've scheduled it for the remainder of the month is, is weekly. So this week has five Wednesdays. So I, I did schedule tentatively a special meeting on May 6th, but the council can let us know later this month whether that's necessary or not.
Yeah, we've, we've, we've had this conversation and just thought that it was probably worth it to, to, to keep doing this for a few weeks just to keep on top of things. So it's not forever, but, but for now, we're doing it every week.
Sure.
Okay, if there's nothing else, I guess we are adjourned. Hey, John, when you, when you turn and go back, when you turn and walk backwards, you actually disappear to the field. It's kind of a nice.
Oh, you know this?
Yeah.
Actually, I didn't. It's when you turn to your face. So if you turn around and walk away, you actually disappear into the field.
Yeah, it's pretty cool. There you go. There you go. You're gone. You're gone.
My shoulder keeps disappearing. I, I don't know.
Also, if you, if you square your face just right, you can get weird effects sometimes.
Oh, yeah.
You have to play with it to get the message.
All right.
Good enough.
All right, all. Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.